Welcome, thank you, welcome to Westwood. I just wanted to give an update, we don't have a formal presentation to give you today, but this time last year, we brought to you, and I know you guys were working hands-on last year with the implementation of our STEAM program. And this you can see is it fully implemented, and we have products around the room that students have completed. It is going extremely well, the kids really enjoy the class. And the board over here that you can see, which was a three-dimensional board, was all student-created in one of our eighth-grade STEAM classes. We have plans over there that the students grew, obviously from STEAM. The shelves you see are also all student-created. So, the program is going extremely well, thank you for the support, and we are looking forward to another successful year next year with STEAM.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Elick?
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is behind you, just behind us. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just some quick introductions, to my far right is Board Member Jim Bax, to my near right is Board Member Greg Elick. I'm Kevin Brubaker, to my left is Vice President Annie Karstarfin, to her left is Board Member Mike Gebhardt, to his left is our Superintendent Dr. Jama, and to his left is our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Board recognition tonight, do you have any?
Go, sir, Mr. President.
Presentations. Klickinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I'd like to present to you the updated five-year forecast. You might recall that the original forecast for the fiscal year 18 through '22 was given to you in October. ODE has a significant investment in our schools, and for that investment, they like to see an update of our financial status twice a year. It's their way of identifying the districts with potential financial problems. And, just kind of a spoiler alert here, we are not a district that will be tagged as having financial problems, which is good news. Just as a reminder, the forecast covers only general fund, other funds, like the PI fund, the building funds, grants, none of those are included, this is just general fund. I gave you a forecast and some assumptions, it's quite a lot of backup information, we're not going to go through it all number by number, this is merely an update of the forecast that was approved in October. I want to thank you, thank the ones who contacted me with questions, I hope my presentation answers any additional questions that you might have. As you know, the forecast is based on history and trends. The first forecasted year is the current year, fiscal year 18. A fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, so we're just about to wrap up fiscal year 18. So, on the forecast, fiscal year 18 has the benefit of 10 months of actual expenditures and receipts. The numbers for fiscal year 18 should be pretty close to what the actual be. My agenda for tonight is simple, we'll start with the overall summary, look a little closer at the revenue assumptions and trends, and do the same for expenditures, and then we'll try and put it all together. You'll be hearing me say words like assumptions and if quite often, because there is, there's no guarantee for the future, and everything is based on assumptions. If you would please turn to the executive summary on page 3. This is the overall summary of how much money we have, how much we'll take in, how much we plan to spend, and how much we'll have left in our account at the end of the year. It's very important to understand that these numbers are based on the renewal of the 4.95 mil levy in November. And that, those numbers are on the line titled "proposed renewal slash replacement levies." So you can see the difference in our forecast, and what that particular levy means to us. This update also shows that the Eliria Schools' financial picture has improved significantly since the filing of the October forecast. In October, we were coming off a year with a 25% increase in medical insurance coverage. We had projected 12% premium increases for the remainder of the five-year forecast. However, we just found out that in fiscal year 19, there are increases zero. So that made almost a $4 million swing over the four years. That coupled with the revenues being just a bit above what we estimated, and expenditures are just a hair lower than the estimates, but those two, all three of those things have improved our financial picture. It has pushed our deficit spending out to fiscal year 20. Now, the biggest risk factor to the forecast is our state aid. State aid depends on many fluctuating numbers, it depends on the number of economic disadvantaged students that we have, it depends on the number of students in general, it depends on the number of students attending community charter or scholarship enrollees, and it will also depend on who our new governor will be, and what kind of changes will happen in Columbus. The forecast assumes that we are on the guarantee, and that the guarantee remains static. That hasn't always been the case in the history, but that's the assumption for this forecast. Another note is with the uncertainty of the new buildings, I did not change any of the forecasted numbers for the new buildings since last October, so I still have the, I still have forecasted five less teaching positions and two less administrators. So if you would turn to page 4 now, for the revenue overview. Overall, the revenues are projected to remain flat in the district's two largest sources of revenue. Our two largest sources are state aid and property taxes. We're also affected by the continued phase-out of the tangible personal property, and you can see that on line 1.05. If you turn to page 12, the expenditure overview, we're showing expenditures to continue to increase at a rate of 3.3% overall. Most of that increase is salaries and benefits. In addition, we believe our enrollment is stabilizing, and therefore, we're not expecting staffing declines, except for what we have for the new building assumptions. Okay, on page 21, you can see the comparison of this forecast in front of you with the forecast that you received in October. And since our October forecast, the financial position for fiscal year 18 for this current year has improved by about $700,000. Again, revenues are running a little ahead of the October forecast, and expenditures are running slightly below the October estimate. The overall difference from October is less than 1%. Okay, then the last page, if you'll turn to that, or the next page, page 22, is the actual required format that ODE recommends, well, they don't recommend it, they require it. I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that we're forecasting a positive cash reserve throughout the forecast, anticipating, that's with the anticipated passage of the renewal, and that's 4.95 mils. There are many different and difficult to forecast areas, including property valuations. In this year, in 2018, we have the re-evaluation of the properties, so that'll be a variable enrollment, changes in Columbus, and using history and trends, based on the stated assumptions, I present this five-year forecast with the assurance that we're committed to being responsible stewards of all the funds that pass through our schools. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Treasurer, can you talk a little bit about the students, the number of students in your calculation here, and how potentially the changes in the students will affect this five-year forecast? Will most of that get picked up in purchased services, or are there multiple lines? I'm assuming state-funding dollars will increase.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of all across the forecast. If we get students back from like a community or a charter school, then our numbers will be less in purchased services for the dollars going out that we had, that followed the kids when they left. When they come back in, we'll get the state dollars back. If that swing would be enough, it could possibly take us off the guarantee and put us back on the formula, which could make a difference. But currently, we are, our, the forecasts that we use, for instance, for the building project, we're trending much higher than that. And I don't mean higher as in, we're losing less, we're getting kids back, we got back 30 kids when ECOAT closed. You know, we didn't get back all of those, but you know, that was, that was a nice bunch of kids.
So, the numbers that we used for the state funding portion of the master plan, the students in that calculation are the same numbers as the students we used in your five-year forecast?
No.
No?
No. Because of the differences that, I mean, we currently are ahead of that, where our numbers are ahead, the kids coming out of the charter and propio schools, they're coming back, I mean, so, we couldn't go with the forecast that the state used anymore.
We're, so we're projecting more students than what the state has? Okay. Interesting.
Any other questions? I have a question, you may have, may not be able to answer this, but I know the county has been very aggressive in going after Arirang's property taxes. And I know all the money they're collecting is not within our district, but have we seen an uptick in that end of it?
We did this year in delinquent collections. We did, it was earlier, it was in the second half collection. Now, in the first half collection of this year, they seemed to be down again. But, maybe by the second half, it'll come back.
Any other questions?
You know, just to follow up on the number of students, is that something that we should be contacting the state about, the difference in the numbers, or is our owners' rep taking care of that?
That is discussed at each core meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Elick, it is discussed, yes.
Okay.
It is, and the other piece of that is, once you have the contract with OFCC, it doesn't matter anymore.
But I don't think we have the contract yet, do we?
Yeah, with OFCC.
The finalized one?
We have a contract with them based on the number of students and the square foot that's allowed for those students.
Okay, so that won't affect the final May decision, then, if there's a fluctuation?
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Since then, I have a resolution here to approve the updated May five-year forecast for the Eliria City School District, what covers the period ending June 30th, 2018 through June 30th, 2022, as presented by the Treasurer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Elick, any discussion? Madam Treasurer, call roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carrier.
Thank you.
Visitor comments, the school board encourages and appreciates citizen interest and meanings of the Board of Education. Normally, the board will meet twice during the month, and will make accommodations to allow for public participation. Persons wishing to address the board for up to five minutes, they place their name on the sign-in sheet indicating the topic they wish to address, and/or make a written request to the Treasurer's office one week in advance to speak up to five minutes. We do have two this evening, and the first one is Mr. Marcus Madison, speaking on the schools.
Thank you. I wanted to just come here today and just personally thank this school board. Not too long ago, over 175 residents of this city came before this school board, and over 45 of those residents came forward, speaking with passion and concern about the building of five new schools. I'm proud to be an Elirian, I am so proud of the work that's taking place, but more importantly, I'm thankful that this school board was able to listen. One of the questions was, "Do you see us?" And it was clear that you were able to see all of the individuals that came to speak with passion about the concern of how will children and families learn across this entire city. The question was, "Do you hear us?" And not only did you hear us, you guys went back to the drawing board, and you have been doing all that you can to make this particular thing work. And then the other piece was, "Does what we say mean anything?" And it is clear that over the last couple of weeks, that working with Superintendent Mr. Jama, and with the school officials, and even the conversations that many of the board members have been having, as well as all of the people that have been reaching out, you all have been stepping up to the plate to, hopefully, one day, for this community to come together and say, "We appreciate the work that you all have been doing to collaborate and to make this work." So I wanted to come and extend just my appreciation and gratitude. What I've been hearing is that not only has the school officials been turning over every rock to make this school piece work, down in the state level, there's been conversations to figure out how to make this concept work. Teachers from all across the city have been reaching out, saying, you know, "This is important, not just for South Eliria, but for every child in this city, and how they learn, and how they tell their story." And we're even willing to make some sacrifices as well to make this work. And so, today, I just want to say thank you, job well done, and I hope in the near future that we can celebrate. And I know that there's still some work to do. On Monday, City Council picked up the conversation of what role can we play in helping to move this conversation forward. We know that the school board has been working hard, we know that our school officials have been working hard, we know that the state's been working hard, and now it is time for City Council to do its job to help make this, this possibility of educating and investing in our children a reality. On Monday, this conversation was tabled, and I'm going to be honest, this issue is too important. It is too important for the children and families that came here, it is too important to the residents, 175, the 45 people that came to speak, for me not to come forward and share with you that I am disappointed that even at the council meeting that we were at, you know, people are purposely trying to confuse the conversation by introducing a collection of fuzzy math, and in some cases, purposely withholding information for the public. This school board, and everyone that's been working, has made it very clear, we must keep our word to the people. And I thank you for doing everything that you can, and I hope that my colleagues and myself and City Council will do the same. One of the comments I shared at the council meeting on Monday was, "We simply cannot tell people that we are doing everything we can to make this thing work, and then continue to throw up roadblocks, that is not genuine, that is not genuine." So, we've got work to do in City Council, and I hope when the issue comes forward, that we will be able to pass the legislation to reduce the permit fees, to give us the opportunity to build all five schools. I hope that we're willing to step up to the plate. You know, time after time, when I joined City Council, one of the concerns that I heard from residents was, "We don't know if people really, if they see us, do they really hear some of the issues and concerns that we're dealing with on this side of town?" And when it comes to the issues and concerns in the fifth ward, we're always told that maybe we need to take some more time to understand the issue. But, I believe that we are making progress, and we are ready to make progress, and the children and families deserve the opportunity to make progress. And so, in closing, again, I just want to thank this committee, this board, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison.
Thanks, Marcus.
Brenda Warren, schools. Yeah, it takes a minute. Go ahead.
All right, I just want to say good evening, thank you so much for this opportunity. I guess you're saying every time I look around, there's this woman sitting at the table. But I just want to let you know that I'm very passionate about the work that you're doing, that we're doing together, and I want to echo what Councilman Madison has said. I do applaud you and appreciate all of the energy that's gone into this process. I know it hasn't been easy, but then anything worth having is worth working for. So I believe that we're in this thing together, and I am delighted to be a part of the work going forward, to usher our schools and the community into the 21st century. I just wanted to come to say to you tonight that we have been having great success with our Save Our School petition, we are wrapping up, getting to the end of that, and we're hoping that by the next school board meeting, we can present that to you, and we will also, at the next council meeting on May the 21st, we're going to make that presentation to the council, the council members, and also to our mayor. We want to do everything that we possibly can to show you that we support you in the work that you're doing. We appreciate each of you, and your heart of service to the community, and especially to our children. So I want to just do this right now, I want to come forward, I want to extend to each of you my hand, in agreement with you, I am here for the long haul, I will be around. I am not going anywhere, because I'm looking forward to us coming to that yes that I desire and I know that you're working towards. God bless you, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to have you sit at that table. Board member discussion items. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bax.
Okay. Let's see, this, last week, I had an individual from Ridge Tool give me a call, and asked me to stop over, and he had this little project going on over at Ridge, and they collected hundreds of, people, are you familiar with Box Tops for Education? He gives me this envelope, and there are hundreds of these things, and, you know, and that was just something that the employees kind of did, and they have continued to do that for the last, for the last year or two. And so, yeah, I thought that was great that, that they did that. I didn't ask them to do it, they just all of a sudden put this thing together and started doing it, and, yeah, I thought it was really nice, so, just wanted to commend them on that.
Mr. Bax, anybody else?
Just, I went to the play, Oliver, and as usual, the kids did an excellent job, it was, it was very good. Unfortunately, I can't hear everything, but that's not their fault.
And I am sporting our robotics team shirt that Mr. Martin gave me today as a gift, so I'm looking forward to having them at the high school next month, when we have our board meeting there, and congratulate them on a job well done. If you didn't follow them on the live stream, or on all the pictures that were floating around, it looked like a very interesting and exciting time, so we look forward to hear their thoughts on that as well. Any further discussion?
Fundraiser, what, Tuesday? Tuesday?
Yeah. And I have tickets available?
So do I.
I have tickets, and mine are a lot cheaper than everybody else's, they're only $10.
All right, moving on, approval of board meeting minutes, approve, motion to approve the Board of Education for proceedings for the April 11th, 2018, as the closure F1. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Karstarfin, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bax, any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carrier. Treasurer, Klickinger, Treasurer action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one is donations. To acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the following gift and donation as listed in the agenda, Sodexo, $7,000 to the Scholarship Fund at Eliria High, and I'm asking for that to be approved.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, I have a motion, do I have a motion to approve as prepared by the Treasurer?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gebhardt, any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carrier. Treasurer report, Ms. Klickinger, anything?
Nothing additional, no.
Thank you. OFCC, OSFC, anything?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Dr. Jama, Superintendent action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations to the Board of Education for Superintendent action items for your consideration this evening. Item number one, very proud to request this of you, to approve the graduation list of students from early college high school, pending completion of all local and state requirements for graduation, and to further commend all the graduates and their families for their accomplishments, and to wish the graduate success in their future endeavors. And something that's really exciting about this, and it's kind of funny, I think, these young people will be getting their two-year associate's degree prior to receiving their high school diploma, because graduation is sooner with the college than it is with, with our district. So I'll have the pleasure of being onstage, presenting them with their college two-year associate's degree. Item number two, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below, $1,000 stipend to the following facilitating summer robotics camp. This stipend will be supported by Title IV A grant for these three individuals, and again, this is just continuing our process with our robotics team. Number three, to approve the overnight athletic field trip for the Eliria High School Boys' Soccer Team to attend Team Soccer Camp from July 20th, 2018 to July 22nd, 2018, at Edinburgh University in Edinburgh, Pennsylvania, as detailed in enclosure K3. Item number four, to approve the purchase order to CDWG for classroom phones throughout the district. This is not to exceed $79,000. This purchase order will be supported by the general fund, and just to let the board members know, we're getting these phones early for our entire district, but these will be the same phones that will transfer into the new buildings. So you're not going to pay for it twice, but we just felt for safety and security reasons, as well as giving teachers opportunities to call parents and, and update the community on information, it'd be great to do it right now, so Brian did a nice job in getting this to take place for the district early. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Jama, do I have a motion to approve the items as recommended by the Superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Karstarfin, any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carrier. Superintendent Personnel action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make the following recommendations under Personnel Action as recommended by the Superintendent for the Board of Education's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff as detailed below. Item number two, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff as detailed below. Item number three, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed Item number four, to approve the retirement of the following classified administrator as detailed below. This is Barb Masaro, she's in our Human Resources Department, she's the executive specialist to Mr. Taylor. Barb has worked for our district for 35 years, and we want to wish her the best of luck as she starts a new chapter in her life. I know I've had the opportunity to work with her for the time that I've been in the Eliria City Schools, and we have been blessed to have her on our staff, so I want to wish Barb the best. Item number five, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff members as detailed below. Mary Ratliff, Annette Will, and- Mary Ratliff, Annette Will, and Susan Bryant, and again, wish them the best of luck as they start a new chapter in their lives. Item number six, to approve the resignation of the following classified administrative staff member as detailed below. Item number seven, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff members as detailed below. Item number eight, and I'm proud to present both of these this evening to the Board of Education, to approve the appointment of the following classified administrator as detailed below. Alex Van Warmer, from head custodian at Elye to operations supervisor in the administration building. And as many of you know, I believe it was one of my first meetings as superintendent, I had the pleasure of hiring Alex, who is an Eliria High School graduate, as the custodian at Elye, and now he's taking on some more responsibility as becoming a supervisor. And then the next, Jamie Barneyer will become the Director of Human Resources upon the retirement of our current HR Director, Mr. Taylor. Jamie did a wonderful job, she went through a very difficult interview process, it entailed actually four interviews. The first one was with myself, then she went on to an interview team where she was asked general questions. Following that interview, she was called back to do scenarios with a team of interview team members, and then finally, she came back and we met again as the superintendent and her. And I'm proud to present her this evening to the Board of Education for appointment to be the new HR Director. Number nine, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members as detailed below. And again, you'll see some movement taking place in the district, as one position, somebody moves into a position, that creates vacancies for other ones, so I'm proud to say that we're moving staff members from within district into new positions. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel action as recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Jama, do I have a motion to approve the personnel items recommended by the superintendent?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Bax, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Elick, any discussion?
Yeah, how long is Mr. Taylor still going to be with the schools? What is the official retirement date there?
August 1st.
August 1st?
Of '18.
Of '18. Make sure that's in the record, right? Okay, all right, okay.
Any other discussion? Madam Treasurer, do you call a roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye, motion carried. Mr. Taylor? Do you have some, or Dr. Jama, do you have some introductions for us?
Absolutely, Mr. Taylor, would you like to introduce our...
Dr. Jama, thank you, board members, always a pleasure, sir.
It's a pleasure, Mr. Taylor.
Always.
Glad you're still here.
Thank you very much. And that's July 31st.
Okay.
But as Dr. Jama so eloquently stated earlier, we have three folks with us this evening. I'd like to recognize, offer congratulations on behalf of the district, folks that are moving on. First, Alex Van Warmer, Alex, stand up. Tina Long, I'm so good to see Tina, she's actually moving to the school. Building operations, Empire's, we'll work presentations. And last but not least, Jamie Barneyer, who will be the new Human Resources Director, who will be starting June 4, 2018. I see myself.
Good evening.
Is she singing?
Yes.
Didn't she say that she was singing?
Oh, you say you were singing. I mean, you're passing the book.
For Eliria City Schools, especially during this very exciting time that the school system is investing in the future of our students. I am very thankful for this opportunity to be able to work for Eliria City Schools. I look forward to working with the leadership team, the staff, the students, as well as the board members, as we try to make a positive impact on our students. I will bring a significant experience of over 17 years' experience of HR knowledge and experience to Eliria City Schools. In addition, I will bring a lot of enthusiasm and excitement and energy. I have a positive energy that's contagious, and I love to build relationships and connect with people. I will create an environment where staff feel valued and staff feel appreciated. So once again, I would like to thank you for this amazing opportunity, and I look forward to working very closely with everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Congratulations, Mr. Van Warmer, Ms. Long, for their promotions as well. Dr. Jama, Superintendent report.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items, I, first of all, I would like to commend Treasurer Clickinger for doing an excellent job with the five-year forecast. I also like to commend our administrative team, the board, and our district for taking the responsibility of using our taxpayer funds and being so responsible with them. As you can see, as, as Ms. Clickinger says, we are, we are in, in good shape, and again, that doesn't come easy, that comes with hard work and people working together to make sure that we're doing the right thing, but those decisions are always made in the best interest of kids. And I, and I'm very proud to say that we have a strong administrative team and a staff that works together very hard to make that happen. I also would like to, at this time, call Tim up. Tim, if you want to share a few things about the high school?
Absolutely.
That I could share, but I think it's going to sound better coming from you.
I'm going to use the mic.
Yes.
Exactly.
Sit down, make yourself comfortable.
All right. There we go.
There we go.
Mr. Brubaker, board members, it's great to see you guys tonight, and as Dr. Jama just said, going to Lorance County Community College for the students to go to early college to graduate, in two weeks, you should be receiving our list of graduates for the class of 2018, and it's an exciting time of the year for the school year, as we get the opportunity to recognize students. We had over 800 students today receive an honor roll, assembly of some sort, whether they made the merit roll, the honor roll, or the high honor roll for the third grading period. And then this past Thursday, we welcomed 78 new members to the Scholastic East, I know there's a couple board members that have children that are a part of that elite club, so we're proud to add 78 more students to that. We have 68 students that are going to be inducted into the National Honor Society on Monday, and then obviously, our seniors are so excited to be that final graduating class from the historic Elye Stadium on June 6th. So, exciting times at Eliria High School. Thank you.
And again, as I've said, I've been out to the districts and into the buildings, and there's a lot of great things taking place. As the weather has gotten nicer, it was nice outside my window today, I got to see the preschool kids planting flowers and marking up the sidewalk with chalk, and I know it's been a long, hard winter, and it's something that we're very deserving of with this beautiful weather. And then finally, I do want to remind everybody that on Tuesday, May 8th, from 5 to 8, the Eliria Schools will celebrate education, and it will also be a fundraiser. It's located at Nick Abraham Ford in Eliria, tickets are $10, and there's going to be a lot of entertainment. We're having two special guests who will be doing entertainment. Amy, do you want to touch base on that real quick, who's actually coming for the, for the program that evening?
Sure.
Zach? I thought it was, Board Member Gebhardt was doing the entertainment.
All right. We, it's really going to be fun. We have two of our own teachers who are the entertainment. Mike Brand, who's an art teacher at Eliria High School, is also a folk singer, and he's actually been playing guitar and doing singing more than, longer than he's been a teacher. He's kind of got a Jimmy Buffett style, really very nice and fun for a spring fling kind of fundraiser. And then we're really fortunate to have Rachel Brown and the Beatnik Playboys, they are actually a fantastic band that plays out all over Cleveland. They're sought after in many of the Cleveland music hotspots, and she's going to perform for us as well. And we'll have auction baskets, the food will be wonderful, can't beat the $10 ticket price, so I think it'll be a great time. We're also having, we were contacted today by WEOL, who's going, asked if they could do a remote from our, from our fundraiser, so they'll be there broadcasting with our own Lisa Roberson, who will also be there broadcasting with us. So, it's gotten a lot of attention and a lot of interest, so I think it'll be a great night.
Sounds like it.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Next item is Board Education, I don't think there's any items for this, there is no executive session, so no further business before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Elick, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax, Madam Treasurer, call roll.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye, motion carried, meeting adjourned.